Kevin Smith, City Council. Mr. Bradley, I'd like to thank you tonight for your dedication to public safety. We greatly appreciate it. I want to make one point very clear. The City Council is responsible for establishing public policy. The City Council is responsible for picking the proper agency that they feel is fit to do the job. All right, let me continue. What I'm saying is the City Council is responsible for establishing public policy and they have a right to choose whoever they wish. My job tonight is to give you the most information you could possibly get to make that a knowledgeable decision on your behalf. Tonight I'm going to put on a presentation that should take about 45 minutes. I'd like to apologize ahead of time if I dab it a little bit, but I only have one chance at this and I'm going to give it my best shot. Okay. So, we're going to talk a little bit about history then we'll get into nuts and bolts of the program here. In 1908, the city of Hemet was established and in 2008, we celebrated our 100-year anniversary. So, that's about 105 years of dedication to pride, commitment, and service. All right, here's a little bit of history. We have Scott Hudson here. He's holding a trophy. He won an award for showing our old Engine 2. Can't really read it back there, but Engine 2 was put into service in 1930 and ran in service to 1979. It fought its last fire in 1963. I was born about a year after that, so it's been retired for about 50 years. And this engine is still in service. We gave rides on this fire engine downtown Harvard Christmas and we run it in the parade yard and it's still in really good shape. Here's some of the guys here with, of course, the Dalmatian. This is probably in the late 70s, early 80s. Once again, we take a lot of pride in our equipment and this piece of equipment is still in service today. All right. Let's get to the nuts and bolts of what we're going to talk about tonight. The City of Hemet Fire Department is an all-risk, full-service fire department. We provide the best economic value. We provide expedient response times. We provide community outreach and disaster preparedness. And the City Council has local control of your own fire department. These are the key topics I'm going to key on tonight for comparison. The levels of service, rather than just go along in bullet points, I'm going to show you pictures of what we do because pictures are worth a thousand words. Right here is a residential structure fire. This is downtown Harvard Apartments. We arrived on season to these apartments and it was fully involved and that's why we're taking a defensive approach and not putting firefighters in that building because a little bit too much fire to do so. Here's another great shot of our personnel responding to residential structure fires. Here's the City of Hemet Fire Equipment Prowl displayed on a residential structure fire. I'm not sure if you're aware of it, but you have top-of-line equipment and top-of-line personnel day-to-day running about 13,000 calls a year, providing the top-level service. Here we are on a commercial fire response. If you don't recognize it, this is downtown Carmelita, Florida. And, yep, that's the theater, 90-year-old theater still standing. The wall's a little still scorched, but one of the reasons why that building is still standing is because of your truck company and the defensive approach we took on that fire. You have that truck downtown for the staff and, once again, that's why that building is still standing, was that 90-year-old movie theater. I want to point out a critical fact with your equipment. The truck company is committed to the city of Hemet. That's important to the city. That's about a million-dollar piece of equipment. Hemet Valley Medical Center helped us purchase that. And it's very important to have your truck company in the city for the reasons such as the downtown Carmelita fire. In the event we contact out, that truck company is going to be committed countywide and it's not going to be committed to your city limits. That is a valuable piece of equipment and we staff it as effectively and efficiently as possible. Here's your firefighters doing a vehicle fire. As you can see, the house is quite nearby. It's very important to make a quick fire attack so that fire does not extend in the structures. We do wildland fire response. Here we are up at the bowl about last year, I would imagine. Here's some more wildland fire response, protecting the propane tank from exploding. As you can see, this guy's taking some serious heat right here. "Mr. Smith, sir, there's our brand-new fire engine you guys approved for us last week. I told you we'd have it in two weeks and it's on the curb today. I greatly appreciate you all approving that grant and allowing us to purchase that fire engine. It's about three times the size I thought it would be. The picture didn't do it justice." So, that's it out front. Please stop by and take a look at the fire engine that we picked up at no costs to the city. This fire engine is being equipped right now with all the spare equipment we have around the city and I'd like to thank AMR ahead of time for committing to put about a $3,800 radio in that fire engine for us. We're working on that as we speak. This fire engine was on display last week at the Fire Expo in San Diego and we displayed this sign thanking the Suboba Band of Assinio Indians for their grant donation. We greatly appreciate it. I'll be going out there in person with this fire engine next week and thanking them. And their next grant is on my desk right now for next year and we're looking at a fire department water tender and that grant should be back to them within about a month. We greatly appreciate their commitment to this fire department. All right, I want to stop for a moment here and talk about mutual aid fire response with our OES. This is the governor's engine. There's quite a few of them throughout the state. The governor can call on this equipment and any point in time we just have to promise to staff that for them. So, the most important part of this is the mutual aid part and that's the provide and receive. All right, so, we have a seven-points-of-white agreement throughout the county. That means that if we provide assistance, we also can receive it. For example, CAL FIRE has an entire fleet of aircraft, fire helicopters, hand crews, bulldozers, and every other kind of piece of equipment you could imagine. We provide mutual aid to the county and they provide mutual aid to us. If I need an air tanker, a heli-tac crew, a hand crew, or a bulldozer, I'll request it from my partners in the fire service from the county. There's no reason for the city to maintain an entire fleet of aircraft or bulldozers when we really don't use bulldozers and aircraft on a regular basis here in town. What we do put our money into is all the things that it takes for us to operate on a regular basis here in town. And we provide as much mutual aid as we receive and this agreement's been going on for longer than I've been around. Right here is a picture of your hazards materials response team. This team recently was certified by the State of California as a Type III team. It can respond within the city or within the county. We give and receive mutual aid with the hazards materials response team also. Here's your hazards materials response team housed at Station 4. It's a great piece of equipment. We utilize it when we need it because hazard materials calls don't come down every day, so we staff it when we need it. And those personnel reside in that fire station and they maintain that piece of equipment on a regular basis. There's a picture of all the equipment that's dedicated to our 12-person team that's committed to training and keeping all their certifications up to par. You've got all their personalized equipment. We have a call, we haul this unit out there, and we mitigate every hazards materials incident in the city. We work with the Riverside County Environmental Health Department to do that here in the city. Oh, yeah, and it doesn't cost the city any money. We have gotten grants for five years in a row at the sum of $67,000, including the grant that's sitting on my desk right now. And when I have a chance to go over and sign it, I'm going to. And this hazard response unit doesn't cost the general fund or my line item budget, purely funded by grants and people that want to participate on the team. We have a terrific hazards materials response team. We also respond to motor vehicle accidents and I want to make a point about that because we're going to talk about Station 3 and motor vehicle accidents. As you can see, all the Hemet Fire Department equipment in the background. Every piece of equipment is equipped with jaws of life, spreaders. The truck company has a full set of ramps and specialized equipment. As you may or may not realize, on this car, this person was taken out of that car utilizing cutters, spreaders, and a ramp and that patient was probably critical as you may see the head impact mark on the windshield. Traffic collision in Station 3's district is the worst traffic collision district in the city. And I'm going to back this up, not just by saying it, but I'm going to show you data that we've analyzed that proves it. And that's why Station 3 is a critical fire engine in the city and I'm going to make that point time after time tonight. Here's another motor vehicle accident. As you can see, once again, our specialized personnel and equipment have removed this door and extricated that patient. Most of these heavy-duty traffic collisions are along Florida between the S-Curve and Sanderson. They're along Warren Road, south. They're along Esplanade. Every one of these is in Station 3's district. I worked on that fire engine for more than eight years during my career and that's the most challenging fire engine in the city. It's not a walk in the park. When you spend 48 hours at that fire station, you realize it when you go home on the third morning. We also do urban rescue. Here we are in our four-by-four command vehicle. We're up here doing a medical aid on a tiger that went down. As you can see, this is a little bit south of town, up in the hills. We four-buy in with AMR and our EMTs and we do urban rescue. We also do puppy rescue. We do it all and this is part of the full-service fire department that I'm talking about. I could have went bullet-by-bullet, but like I said, pictures are a thousand words. This poor little chihuahua was involved in a structure fire and our men and women went in there above and beyond Call of Duty to save a puppy. They brought that puppy out to the lawn, they provided it oxygen, yep, they transported it to the veterinarian, and it lived. Right, and the puppy left. So, a few of these men or women are going to be recognized by the American Legion on March 16th for their act above and beyond the Call of Duty. The men and women of this fire department are committed to all forms of life in providing a level of care that is commendable. We also have an urban search and rescue team, a USAR team. We've been part of this urban search and rescue team for as long as I've been around. This is our team deployed down at Hurricane Treta. As you can see, they're in a boat going through the town, searching the houses. We also went to the 9/11. Many of our men and women went to 9/11. A few of them came back with some severe respiratory problems. One of them's here in the audience tonight. That's him. He's right here behind me. He was the guy in the picture and he was deployed also. Okay, this is your emergency operations center. This center is run by Buddy Riley. He's your emergency operations coordinator. Recently Buddy and I have embarked on the endeavor to widen the entire disaster preparedness program throughout the city. I'm very compassionate about disaster preparedness because the city of Hemet is on a island and it's the responsibility of the fire chief to go ahead and do that. And we've expanded on that greatly in the last 12 months and we'll talk about that a little more as we go. Our budget right now for the EOC is a mere $51,300. Oh, yeah, it's substituted with about $40,000 worth of grants that runs our entire CERT program. So, once again, we're taking great advantage of the entire grant program for your emergency preparedness. We also have a City of Hemet Mobile Communications Unit that's tied to the Emergency Operations Center. This unit right here is how we're going to communicate with the people throughout the community in the event of a major disaster. This unit will be responsible for communicating with our Emergency Operations Center and all the emergency evacuation points and CERT teams throughout the city, if not the valley. Oh, yes, you have your own helicopter. Not sure if you're aware of that. We have our own Mercy Airship. It's a public-private relationship. You're going to see that I do an awful lot of public-private relationships. This is how you do more with less and become effective and efficient and use the funding that you have. This helicopter stationed at Station 4. Very grateful for Mercy. You have doing that? Oh, yeah, they pay rent. They provide us a helicopter and they pay us $45,000 a year for rent. And we get to use that helicopter and I get to go flying in occasionally. And when I do, we go around the city looking for landing zones. It's important to have landing zones throughout the city and let me be clear about this. Landing zones are not a required place to land, but it's an opportunity for the incident commander who is in charge of where the helicopter will land to choose that location if he feels fit. Or he could land that helicopter in the middle of Florida Avenue if he wishes. But to have 10, yes, we've established 10 predetermined landing zones throughout the city by the use of this helicopter for free, yeah, they pay us rent to do that. It's kind of a nice relationship. Continue me. One of the first LZs we established with this public-private relationship with Mercy Air is LZ 1, no other than Hemet Valley Medical Center. At the Hemet Valley Medical Center's request, we established this public-private relationship between Hemet Hospital, Mercy Air, and the local Hemet City Fire Department. We flew over that site, we picked a great LZ, and we established that with the hospital. And now the hospital can roll their patients right outside and take off right from our home downtown hospital. By the way, this is going to be the core of medical services during a huge disaster. We have to set up means and ways of transportation in all forms there. We also established, one of the 10 LZs is here at Simpson Park with this public-private relationship. Simpson Park is your very own 500-acre park. As you can see, it's filled with trails with hikers and bikers out there playing in the wilderness. It's about the farthest place in the city you could respond to. So, we went ahead and established a landing zone up there, right on top of Simpson Park. And by the way, every time we establish a landing zone, Mercy Air shares that GPS information with the rest of the helicopters in Southern California. If we ask them to come to LZ 6, they all know where they're headed. We also established Landing Zone 5. Now, this is across the street, down the street from Station 5. We not only made this a landing zone, but we also established it as an emergency evacuation point embedded with 30 trained personnel in this facility. As you can see, this is a terrific place to triage people on the front lawn. It's got a great traffic pattern through the entire parking lot. It's got a great landing zone out back. This facility holds 900 people and it has a commercial kitchen and the ways and means to make it a terrific evacuation point facility. This is the Church of Nazarene. I'd like to thank Pastor Dorsey for his cooperation on this. He's been a terrific supporter of the Hemet Fire Department. Right here's LZ number 3. As I mentioned before, we're creating these landing zones semantically throughout the city at facilities, churches, schools, and anywhere else we can locate them efficiently. This is also an evacuation point with a commercial kitchen, the ways and means to feed, house people. This is a terrific landing zone out here, so along Main Thoroughfare. I'd like to thank Pastor Ritter for his cooperation on this landing zone. All right, didn't really want a picture of me in there, but this is the only one I had. This is Station 5. About four years ago, one of the prior fire chiefs was in a position similar to mine today and we were forced to close Fire Station 5. That fire station sat empty for more than four years. Within 60 days of me taking the office, I got together with Jack Hanson, thank you, Jack Hanson, and we put a paramedic ambulance in that empty fire station. And yes, they pay us rent to stay there also while providing paramedic ambulance in our empty fire station. Once again, this is a public-private relationship, providing services to the city at no additional cost. Thank you, Jack Hanson and AMR. All right, weed abatement. Weed abatement falls in there right along the lines with shopping carts and graffiti. Some of the very few complaints that the fire department gets is weed abatement. In your city, you have 500 lots throughout the city. These little red spots represent non-compliant lots. The firefighters and the fire engine go out and inspect all these lots and find out which ones are compliant and which ones are not. Through another public-private relationship, we've established a contractor that goes out and mitigates those lots in the event citizens don't mitigate themselves. As you all know, we have a resolution. We put out public notice. We do this all during City Council meetings. And we mitigate all those lots throughout the city, 500 of them every year. We take a lot that looks like this, that is full of light flashy fuels, with wind in any direction will light this fence on fire that goes around the entire community of hundreds of homes in close proximity to the structure. Not only is this blight and causes complaints, but it's also a fire hazard. The firefighters and the engine go out there and make sure we mitigate this stuff. We take lots that look like that and we turn them into lots that look like that. As you can see, there's no light flashy fuels to carry this fire anywhere. Couldn't light that dirt if you tried. Public-private relationship, sorry. Okay, this is a good one. City Hemet Fire Department has always thrived to have its own paramedic program. In the days, I've seen multiple attempts at it. I've seen attempts that had a $5-million price tag attached to a paramedic program. We never have had the funding to put this paramedic program together. We have to be innovative nowadays. We have to do more with less. We have to make things happen no matter what. Here's an opportunity we have. It's been put together by a variety of people I'm very thankful for. This is an agreement. You can't read it, but the reason why I scanned the document because it's proof that Joe Bergenfield has signed it down here. He's the executive CEO of Hemet Valley Medical Center. In this letter, they are committed to providing the city of Hemet a paramedic program at no cost. Let me review that a little bit. It gets better. Currently, I have an EMS fund that has about $50,000 in it. These funds come from AMR that they're fines and we've been putting away in that fund for a long time. This equipment has been committed by Hemet Valley Medical Center. We have to buy a form of equipment for every engine company. They also are committed to providing training. They're committed to providing a medical director from Hemet Valley Medical Center and, oh, yeah, no cost to establish a paramedic program. I thank the Hemet Valley Medical Center for the commitment to the city of Hemet and the city of Hemet Fire Department. We work hand-in-hand with the hospital. It's important and we continue to do so. That was one of the offers. Here we have a similar offer by American Medical Response from Jack Hanson. Thanks again, Jack Hanson. Here is AMR committing to developing a paramedic program for the city of Hemet. Equipment provided by AMR, training provided by AMR, a medical director provided by AMR, still the same $50,000 in EMS enhancement fund. Well, yeah, no cost to establish a paramedic program. All right, I'm not sure if any of you have heard of Art Durbin. He's the EMS director of Myrieta Fire Department. His son works for us on the fire department, asked for quite some time. Art Durbin is the icon of paramedic programs throughout the county, very closely tied to Riverside County EMS Division, Bruce Barton. Art's established quite a few fire departments throughout the county, has a template to do so, one of the most intelligent men I've met in the EMS division. We still have the $50,000 for the EMS fund, equipment provided by Hemet Valley and/or AMR, training provided by Hemet Valley and/or AMR, and an EMS direction provided by Art Durbin. And yes, once again, this is at no cost to the city. I could not imagine putting all three of these individual companies in one room and imagining what they could hammer out for the City of Hemet Fire Department at no cost to establish it. We may spend a little bit to continue to run it year to year, but we have a terrific opportunity. I've never seen any opportunity like these three all line up at one time ever yet without a million-dollar price tag or more on it. All right, you also have a Hemet Fire Prevention Division as part of your level of service. It's very important to have your own fire prevention division in your city. We provide fire safety inspections, certificate of occupancy inspections, and these are the inspections that get the businesses' doors open like right now. They must go through this inspection to get their doors open and we are committed to getting businesses' doors open as quickly as possible. It's all about commerce right now. That means getting the business' doors open right away. We have recently moved on into electronic plan checking where we no longer carry rolls of prints back and forth across the street and send them out via a carrier. We receive our plan checks in PDF file and I email them if necessary to our public-private relationship, once again with a third-party plan checker. This plan checker returns these prints twice as fast for half the cost. There's no reason for our personnel to be flipping through a huge set of prints for hours on end when we need their boots in the field doing inspections. A third-party plan checker is the way to do it effectively and efficiently nowadays. We've also established building department counter hours. We have people that now can walk into the building department, talk to one of our fire inspectors, and get something signed over the counter. This is so we provide a better service for our citizens and our businesses. We also play a valuable role in the Hemet Rocks Task Force that we've recently created. The city has, and we go out with the building department code enforcement and we get those jobs done together as a team, the Hemet Rocks Task Force. The current fire prevention budget is $221,000. Oh, yeah, that's included in the bid. You have your own Hemet Fire Investigation Division. We are part of the Riverside County Arson Investigation Unit. We give and receive mutual aid with this agency and we do cause and origin on every single fire in our city. And if it looks suspicious, we investigate it, make a report, and yes, we've apprehended arsonists in the past. Every fire we have, including this suspicious device, which is a rocket, a little rocket, toy rocket, someone lit off, started a vegetation fire, and we did cause and origin and determined who the individual was who accidentally lit the rocket off that started the 2-acre fire. Oh, yes. I want to talk a little bit about Hemet Fire Department revenues, grants, and income. I want to mention beforehand, some of these funds are included in my budget as reimbursements, as in front-loading in my annual budget. Some of these are grants, some of these are incomes, and I just wanted to take a moment to balance this off you. Okay, Suboba Indian Gaming Grant, Fire Recovery USA, AMR leases Station 5, Mercy Air, Station 4, Fire Permits, Plan Check Fees, Fire Inspections, Weed Abatement, Emergency Management Performance Grants, Homeland Security Grants, this is all for that. CERT training, currently we're funded to do a CERT class every month for the entire year. We have, what, 280 people on our team right now? We should be about better than 600 people by the end of the year. We recently received that Seahawk Grant again, $67,000. We receive FEMA grants for CERT. We also recently received a FEMA grant for satellite communications where our Emergency Operations Center now has three satellite cellular phones for free grant money. Fire Act, we had a CERT plus, and recently, out of the blue, Hemet Fire Department beneficiary grant for $79,000. Now, I know some of this is front-loaded, but this is a total of $682,260.20. This year, I intend to keep this up. This is not all me. This is the men and the women in the City Hemet Fire Department being motivated to go out and do more with less. Get all these grants. I only helped on a couple of these, only signed the one about the rush engine. Skip Ireland, Randy Darkens, got that going. Skip's been writing that grant for five years. We finally got it. That fire engine's out on the curb right now. Thank you, Skip. This is the nuts and bolts. Actually, there's only about six or eight slides that are the nuts and bolts. The rest are stories. Okay, this is our proposed daily staffing options. We have Option 1, Option 2, and Option 3. Don't be confused with CAL Fires, please, because they dimmed in opposite, 3, 2, and 1. So, our best economic option is what we're currently doing now. Our Option 2 includes two battalion chiefs as full-time administrative staff. And our Option 3 includes two battalion chiefs and a paramedic program. It's not going to cost the city anything to establish it, but I did put a stipend in there, excuse me, for all the firefighters who've chosen to go through paramedic school and maintain their paramedic certification. They deserve a little kickback for going through that. Paramedic school is no easy task. So, it's not a lot, but it's enough to get us started. I want to go over my span of control. Right now, my span of control is six people. I have Battalion 1A, 1B, 1C, who handle operations, fire prevention, and training. These people are committed to these positions. Let's recall again. Let's recall again, four years ago, the fire chief was in a position, once again, like the one I'm in, and he erased the administrative staff. We went on like that for four years. I immediately corrected that also and established an administrative staff because it is imperative that you have operations for your daily ops, fire prevention for your daily fire prevention, and you've got to have an ongoing training program so you can continue to promote people and have a succession planning program for your department. We have a fire prevention officer, an administrative assistant, and our EOC coordinator. I want to quote a couple of our policies here. This is Department Policy 1005, last revised in '04. It's the Hemet Fire Department Acting Certification Program, and it covers acting battalion chiefs and duty officers. Every duty officer that we have has qualified under Department Policy 1005 to be a duty officer. Furthermore, they meet the rules and regulations of the city of Hemet as an acting appointment, meaning they must all meet the same standards required for battalion chief, and they all receive acting pay to do so. So, I put them to work. They're being paid for it, they're qualified for it, and we need the staff. We're doing more with less. So, since they were being paid for it and they're qualified throughout across the city, rules and regulations, I put them to work as my administrative staff, and they're all doing a fine job. Mike Spalding, Laura Fielding, and my operations guy, Primo Reynoso. This guy has more time here in this department than I do. Each one of these people are extremely qualified as administrative staff and they do a fine job. Michael Spalding, he's an instructor over at Mount San Yussino College, has been doing that for longer than I can remember. Why not make him your training officer? Thank you very much, Mike. Primo, Laura. Okay. Talking about best economic value, I felt compelled to point this out. These are general expenses included in the budget but not directly related to fire suppression, prevention, and emergency office center. These are expenses that would not be funded by CAL FIRE. I know I've pointed these out before, and Rita and I have talked these over back and forth, and in fact, it's in the staff report. Most of it is on the screen here. Things like retirement, medical facilities, maintenance, general fund overhead coming up to about $1.539 million. We also have one-time payout leave, ongoing PERS liability. This isn't all of it, but it's most everything I could find. We're talking about $2,439,500. I wouldn't point it out, but that's a lot of money. These are unfunded liabilities. Okay, let's talk about our startup costs. Communications, facilities, personnel, service center. You've already amortized your startup costs over the last 105 years. We are a fully functional, full-service fire department. You're going to hear me say that a few more times. Apologies ahead of time. If you take a look at all three of the options from CAL FIRE, the last numbers I looked at for startup fees, and no harm intended, but every agency that I looked that put a proposal out has some form of startup expenses. They can't just go in there and start a business without spending additional money. It's just not possible. I believe the startup fees are around $602,000 to $652,000 to get started, and these are startup fees that are absolutely required to get going. We have none. Here's your options. I'm going to talk a little bit about Station 3 here. This option number three, about $9.7 million, includes removing Station number three. I've mentioned before that I've been on this fire engine for about eight years. I'm going to talk a little bit more, not just about my opinion. I'm going to show you facts and data that talks about why this low bid here, as the lowest one, is nothing that I could recommend, and I'm going to do it with facts and data. The rest of the numbers speak for themselves. You can see I have a really narrow version. It's basically battalion chiefs and paramedics. Never really considered closing the fire station, comparing apples to apples in the bid. Never considered that one of the bids would be less than an apple or closing the fire station. If I had to, it would not be Station 3. I would analyze the data, the call volume, see where most of the medical aids take place, like Station 2's district, less fires, less traffic collisions. Station 3 should never be considered a location to close. The repercussions of that would be staffing it almost immediately again. I'm sure of it. Been in this town for a long time. I know that station is a ruthless fire station. This does not include the one-time startup costs, okay? These are just annual expenses. All right. Let's put the response time thing to bed. No matter who is in this city or what patch they wear, they're going to be raring. They're going to be driving the same fire engine. They're going to be coming from the same fire station. They're going to be going over the same dips and going around the same traffic. It doesn't matter whose patch is being worn, the response times will be the same because there's no such thing as a super-duper engineer. They're all going to drive safely to the calls, and every experienced engineer will run about the same time. We ran our data just like CAL FIRE did. You can't really see it, but once again, this is a scanned sheet, and down here, it says it's from West Covina Service Group. This is from our dispatch center, when I found their database. Eighty percent of the time, our response time is four minutes and nine seconds. Let's look at some of the numbers on Station 3. Here's Station 3. Okay, Station 1 is a very busy engine, but you have two units there. Station 3 ran 2,513 calls plus. This is not a full year's data. Don't forget, I made this proposal, what, November, early November, so the data's not conclusive. Station 3 is one of the busiest fire engines. Let's go down here and review some data, analyze what we have here. Station 3's medical aides are about 1,899 calls a year on medical aides. Seventy-six of those are traffic collisions with injuries, just like the ones we saw in the picture where they're all mangled up, where you had to cut that patient out of that car. Seventy-six. They're almost as many as downtown. We also had 30 fires out of that station. Totally, don't forget, this is just medical aides, traffic collisions with injuries and fires. Over 2,000, pretty critical calls. We ran some times from Cottonwood Station, the police department did, out to Four Seasons. It was 10 minutes. 10 minutes all the way out to Four Seasons, 10 minutes to those grinders on the S-curve. What about Hemet West? Those are major communities. Oh, yeah. I recently did an impact study of public safety for the New Ramona Creek Project. We're getting ready to annex a huge amount of property west of Warren Road with thousands of homes, thousand homes, please, and a huge commercial frontage. My recommendation was adding a squad to Station 3. I love staffing Station 3 in anticipating this huge development, that we're meeting with the developers on a regular basis. It sure looks like it's going to go through. These individuals have their program together, and Station 3 is not a station that you can unstaff. It's supported by data and future development. Let's talk about emergency medical dispatch for a moment. I know that's a key to this city. It always has been. I ran EMD with AMR as a public-private relationship all the way to Sacramento in the last six months. I had Karen Wong, who's the chairperson from the 911 Commission, fly down and meet with myself, Mark Orm, Bruce Barton from Riverside County EMS, Jack Hanson, their CEO, and they denied my public-private relationship with AMR. They was greatly disappointed, but they did commit to providing the city of Hemet with emergency medical dispatch personnel. It was amazing that they denied me a public-private relationship but said, "If you provide us the data, we would consider providing you the personnel to do so," and that is the answer to becoming effective and efficient here in this city on EMS calls. We've got to make this happen. Once again, it doesn't look like it's going to cost the city any money, but we've got to have the time and the effort and the motivation to be committed to making this happen here in our city. We'll no longer be sending a fire engine with 500 gallons Racing Code 3 down Florida to a non-emergency call. We've analyzed the data. There's quite a few of those. Our resources, what we use for two emergencies, this is truly potential. Moving on from EMD. Okay, community outreach. I'm almost there. Part of having your local fire department is about community outreach. This is our open house that we've had for longer than I've been here. This is little Sparky the Dog teaching this young little lady that it's okay to tell on these two little boys that they're playing on match, playing with matches and lighting the field on fire. The way to have community outreach is to get a hold of children at this age. You reach out to the community, and the community reaches back out to the fire department. This is why you want a local fire department here, so we can do these community outreach We take it well beyond this. This is just the beginning of how we reach out to the children in our community. Right here, led by Dave Prieto. Dave Prieto, at any given time, has 20 different kids, men and women, as part of our Hemet Fire Department Explorer Program. Heck, I've sponsored four of these kids in the last year to Fire Academy. We send them to Fort Irwin Fire Academy. We motivate them, we train them, we teach them discipline, we teach them leadership, and every one of these kids are kids from our community. They start at the age of 14 years old and they go up to the age of 18. This young man became a Marine recently. This young man works for AMR. Tell you, it's my intention to put a paid call squad right next to our fire engine and move these people that we've trained for the last four years onto that paid call squad running medical aids out of Station 1 so that I can use our squad out of Station 1 at Station 5. Pay these kids $10 a call, certified EMTs through the county. This is an inspiration of mine. We have a spare squad. We have the people. This could be easily done, and we could duplicate it more than once. I started as a paid call firefighter, working in Valley Center Fire Department that was ran by CAL FIRE when I started, what, many years ago? So, that's my inspiration. Paid call squad is part of working more efficiently and more effectively with what you have, and we don't got to train these kids for four years and send them down the road to another agency. They should stay with us. These kids right here run the Hemet Fire Department Safety Trailer. This is a safety trailer that we bring out to open house. We bring out to many events throughout the city. This is a trailer where we teach fire safety. The kids go through this. They teach about, learn about kitchen safety. We smoke the trailer out, teach them how to get down low and crawl out the back exit. We teach them how to get out of their own house. We teach them how to be safe with fire, how to evacuate a house. What we should do with the explorers that we have is take them for an explorer post and turn them into real firefighters that are inspired to come to work for the city Hemet Fire Department. Can't tell you how many kids I've talked to that are inspired to come here and work at the city Hemet Fire Department. So, that's my inspiration, is to take our explorers and turn them into paid call firefighters and get them out there and train to become our own firefighters. We do community outreach programs like fire extinguisher training in our local community. Here we are, training in, it looks like a mobile home park. We do training at skilled nursing facilities, and yep, we teach little old ladies how to put out a fire safely in their mobile home. This little old lady just snuffed about a four-foot tall grease fire. Yep, and she had fun doing it. We talked about this for days. Okay, community outreach, reaching out to our community as your local fire department. Here's our community outreach program with our Community Emergency Response Team, Disaster Prepariness. This is our quarterly meeting. We had about 70 or 80 people turn out. Like I said, currently, we have 280 people in our CERT program. We had enough to divide it into three different divisions, your local Hemet Fire Department Division, your church and facility division, and your community division. These people are motivated out there to become prepared in emergency disaster preparedness. We've got to do this in our city. We're going to be on our own. We have a place for CERT for everybody. These nice young ladies here, CERT team members, are working out our open house, handing out disaster preparedness information, and handing out flyers to become part of our CERT team. Like I said, right now, we're booked for the next two months, and we're funded for the rest of the year. Here I am, working with the Hemet Valley Medical Center. Keith Garrison, the operations director over there, called me up to say I got some annual training I need to take care of. Yep, that's the truck that they helped purchase in their local fire department, doing training at the church, which is going to be the core of a disaster when it hits. We have to be prepared to work with our hospital. We need to know what they're, what they need in an emergency, and they've got to know what we can provide and what we need in an emergency. This is your local fire department working with your downtown Hemet Valley Medical Center. We also have a muster of district free community fundraising program. These are firefighters out there, fill the boot. We also do a food collection program and a Toys for Cots program. This goes on all year long locally. Here they are in the Christmas parade. We got your explorers down there helping out in the parade. They did a terrific job, and I'd like to commend explorers this year once again for helping out in the Christmas parade. This is a big deal in town. So, as you can see, very proudly supporting the city of Hemet Fire Department. Okay, local control. We're almost there. Again. Okay. Recently, I've worked with the city council about matching the resource and personnel with the call type. Due to budgetary constraints and the reductions in our general fund, in my budget, of course, we've absolutely gained a lot of ground on matching the resource and personnel with call type. In the past, we had the truck company, had a lot of complaints about the truck company in the past, going to the gym, going to the store. My gosh, the truck company. We do need it, but we need to send the truck to truck calls. Recently now, we send a squad to medical aids and not a million-dollar truck company. We cross-staff it because that's all the money we have funds to do for. I wish I had a four-person truck company out of Station 1, I really do. I'd put one on each end of town. We'd have an engine and a squad at each station. That's not going to happen, so we do the best we can with what we have. Local fire department, community outreach. It's very important with local control. You may not get that otherwise. Fire Station 3 needs to be staffed because it's the busiest fire engine in the entire city, and the fire department has pride in our community. That's why you're seeing your firefighters out there participating in the community. Each and every one of these individuals have pride in their community. They want to get out there, they participate. Here's a big one for last year, financial control with local control. Last year, I had some staffing changes. As you will know, we went through some big budget problems last year. I had to cross-staff the truck, really didn't want to, but we did overnight. We put it at Station 4, and we put it at Station 4 because all the fire stations are busy, but the truck company is mostly available if it's stationed at Station 4 because it's not the busiest fire station in town. We can only house that truck company in two locations, 1 House and 4 House. It's at 4 House because we can house it there and it's available more than it would be at Station 1. It's also within the city limits, and it's down there in the commercial corridor where all of our commercial buildup is taking place. We are moving west. The downtown is moving west. So, a lot of our commercial applications are on the west end, Ford and Sanderson. Also pulled down a line item, budget reduction by $385,000 by trending a five-year period and see what we had left over and see what we didn't. HFFA gave back 5% and $197,000. Yep, we reduced our budget by $1,032,000 last year, and I came under budget, from what I understand, by $250,000. We stopped spending last year. We saved nine firefighter positions, but most importantly, we're preventing the closing of another fire station. It would have had to been probably Station 2 or 3, not stations I would want to close. Right now, we have four engines in the squad. We're running 13,000 calls plus a year. That's a lot of call load, more than most. At 2013, my mid-year budget analysis was projected to come under budget by $30,000, so we are right on track at mid-year. I'm going to do my very best to make sure we come under by more than that. City Hemet Fire Department mission statement. Hemet Fire Department is dedicated to community safety and the preservation of life, property, and the environment. Hemet Fire Department provides a high level of service and is an all-risk, full-service fire department. This is in review. We provide the best economic value. We provide expedient response times. We provide community outreach and disaster preparedness. We provide community outreach and disaster preparedness citywide, and we maintain, maintains local control of public safety. You maintain local control of your own public safety. This is important for you, I believe. Steve Hemet, over 100 years, pride, commitment, service. Thank you very much.
Yo, congratulations. Now, Stan, let me take, here's our rock star. Do you wish to consider a break at this point, if you want to just go on?
Yeah, we'll go ahead and we'll take a quick, we'll take a quick five-minute break.